Good afternoon and welcome. This is the June 3, 2024 work session of the Salisbury City Council. In the event of an emergency, we ask that everyone remain calm and exit through the doors to your right. Proceed to the right down the stairs. If that exit is blocked, exit to your left, down the hall, and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevator and let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we ask that everyone please silence your cell phones. Public comments will be heard after each agenda item. If you plan to speak, please fill out a form near the table, near the door you came in, and give it to the city clerk. If you plan to speak during the budget public hearings in the special meeting, you do not have to fill out a form. Following the work session, council will convene in a special budget, special budget session following a special meeting. Public comments will be heard after the special meeting, but not during or after the special budget session. This time, we'll invite Joellen Bynum to the table to present a resolution to approve amendment CDBG PY 2023 Plan.
Good afternoon.
You can pull it, pull it down. Yep.
Yes, the first item that I had is this substantial amendment to the program year 2023 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. I had consulted with the DID project engineer and city administration as it was determined there was a need for more funding to complete two of the currently underway projects, Truitt Street Community Center and the Waterside Park restroom and pavilion projects, which were already committed to back in program year 2021 and 2022. So I drafted this resolution to approve the substantial amendment. It has been on public display. And when the comment period ending, we had not received comments at that time. But the Housing and Community Development Department had determined that the funds that are being moved from the 2022 plan that were originally going to Ann Street Village are no longer needed and that we would reallocate those to Truitt Street. And then originally, the 2022 sidewalk money, reallocate that to Waterside Park so that we can finish that as DID has projected that that is going to take a larger allocation than was originally anticipated.
Question for you, myself. I remember trying to scurry back in my mind about the homeless service intensive case manager. Did we, I remember something was going with that position back in October, November or so, or there was another position that we decided to, to reallocate or something. Can you give, can you shed a little bit of light on that?
So that, so that position was funded through CTI. CTI was a grant program and it funded a full salary and fringe. However, the CTI program has ended, the program itself has ended. So nobody anywhere can apply for that, that funding right now, which we had one position that was in that. This money that was in here, the $19,000, and the situation comes down to when planning and building the Ann Street Village, there was need for a, should have done an environmental assessment of the project at the time. And the director at that time did not do that and began purchasing items. One of the items was the bath house and had, at the time, they had some patients. They could have purchased one that may have been ADA accessible, but the one that they purchased is not. And we cannot make it ADA accessible. So the doors aren't wide enough, the bathrooms aren't big enough. So the money that was allocated in here was to help enhance that. So put in a ramp, put in some other things and, and fund that other position. But since the Ann Street is not ADA, technically ADA accessible, we are not allowed to use any federal funds there because of that.
So, and that was my second question. So again, since Ann Street is not deemed ADA accessible, which, and we are, which that kind of hurts my heart that we're so many years in and we're just now realizing that it's not ADA accessible. And again, I'm District 2, I bleed District 2, and I would love to see funds into the Truitt Street Community Center, yet I don't want to see it moved or allocated from Ann Street. So that kind of, I'm a little conflicted there. What, what would make it, or do we, do we look into, what's the research behind, what would make Ann Street?
We, we would basically have to purchase a new or separate bath house that is ADA accessible and either, and we would have to sell the old one or see if somebody else wanted to purchase it or something like that. I mean, we can look into those costs. However, the CDBG funding is a use it or lose it. And so, you know, that's why we felt it more appropriate to go to a project that was already underway, but we could circle back, I assume, and look at some other options.
I'm just, I'm cautious. Give me one moment. I'm cautious because when did we, we didn't realize this when we applied or what, what was the timeline that we didn't realize that the funds could?
A lot of times when you're applying for CDBG funding, and even this year, we start the process in October, November.
Right, yeah.
And so probably when, when they put this in, they had not, at that time, started purchasing anything.
Okay.
I believe, I could be wrong, but I know it was like, the timing of submitting what you want to apply for, for CDBG funding, usually that stuff wraps up by January, February. Because it's the process to put this together, the CDBG plan, it's massive, as you can see the, as you can see the, so it's not something that is a one or two page thing. It's usually a 300-page document, multiple documents. So, you know, that's kind of the, the timing of when they plan it. So a lot of times they, the same thing with the, she and I, Joellen and I were talking earlier today, the project out of Waterside Park. Initially, they thought it was only going to be a couple hundred thousand dollars, but that was just them guesstimating at that point. And then when they actually get into the project, they realize, oh no, it's going to be much more, which is why they're looking for some more funds. Was that a good example, Joellen?
We're on on, so you don't have to press the button anymore.
Wonderful. Just also higher level, as we talk about Ann Street Village, it's, we have talked about it here openly, that we are looking to transition away from management of that facility to a third-party manager and potentially even surplusing that property. Us continuing to invest a whole bunch of capital dollars into a project that may be changing course and operations with a different vendor, I think it's best for us to continue, to utilize funding for a project that we know is moving forward in the same capacity, since it is CDBG funding and it's been, and we award that every single year. If there's a desire to do a digital further capital investment in Ann Street post the transition, when we get to what this looks like after we transition away from it, there's still that opportunity to exist. But it's, it's not, we have a real need right now with finishing Truitt Street that needs to get completed before the, and Ann Street, I know we're moving away. And I don't think the amount of money that was allocated would get us to solve, solve that problem. So it would be, we'd need to drop back and punt. So if that's something that we look at doing, we do have another CDBG funding round that comes up in the, in the near future. But I think this is a smart use of the funding. I think the mayor would agree to that.
Cancel comments? Yes.
I agree with the president, Darby, in the fact that I'm concerned that Ann Street is going by the wayside. I understand the financial piece and what we've gotten into there. My concern is it's never been filled and what happens in the interim where we have 10, eight or 10 people there now? What happens to them through this transition period and the money being reallocated somewhere else?
Well, this money was never intended as a part of the budget and operating this was for something else. We are still operating Ann Street to the best of our ability. The biggest challenge is there with Ann Street, again, is, as I've had conversations with several other people, is, is those who are applying for the program agreeing to participate in the requirements of the program. So for example, over the past month, we've interviewed about 20 people, applicants for Ann Street, and only three people have agreed to the program. So, which is mental health assessment, substance use assessment, health assessment. So there's, you know, they, there's a whole round of things that they have to agree to to participate in the program. It's not just grab somebody off the street and throw them in. That's not how we operate. There's, there's rules, there's policies, there's things we have to go by. And we, we are in the process of creating a, we're almost done with it, a readmission program for some of those who may have been dismissed from the program based on certain violations that we're now creating a process for readmission. So, you know, again, there's no alcohol or substance use allowed on the property. So that is the biggest challenge that we, that we struggle with. And so that, again, it's, you know, we're doing everything that we can, again, on the other side of those who are seeking to move from homelessness to transitional, into permanent housing. You know, there's also a piece that that individual has to commit to, and most of them do not want to commit to the program.
So I just, my, my concern is, then I'll pivot to you, Councilwoman Gregory, is that, you know, it's, it's, we're at this use it or lose it situation, and it's, it's, I understand the timing, but it just seems a little convenient, again, that, you know, we, we're entertaining the thought of, you know, a different partnership is what I understood, a different partnership with Ann Street, but it sounds like we want to step away. So that's, that's a different conversation, it's a different conversation than I, and we've been asking about what the update is. So that's, it sounds like we want to step away from, but I, and council was under the impression that we were still partnering with, so why not continue to invest? And so it just, it seems in poor taste that we would have applied for grant funding for ADA, to improve the ADA accessibility, and we can't even use the fund. It just seemed, I mean-
Again, that application was probably done, that stuff was probably put in over 18 months ago.
Yeah.
So that process, it's a long process.
Yeah.
And it's a long time. So when you, and they put that in before they had even opened the project. So again, that's, that, that again is, is them guessing on what they were going to need as they got into it and realized when I first came, this was a conversation she and I had back in November and December, that we realized early on that the thing that they bought was not going to be workable. And again, that was a decision made well over a year ago.
I understand. I'm not, this is not directed towards either. I'm just, I'm voicing, and again, I think we've dropped the ball with Ann Street many times, and again, yet again, we're having the same conversation where the ball's being dropped with Ann Street. I'm, it's, it's, I'm a little tired of having that conversation. And I thought, again, us partnering with an entity, you know, to improve it, that's, that was a good win, but yet we're dropping the ball on something else.
And we're still in the process of putting that, that process together for the partnership. So we're not, we're not pushing Ann Street to the side. We are, you know, we have two people working there very hard with the residents that are there, that we have people outreach to bring people into Ann Street. So we, we are not, Ann Street is not on the back burner. That is-
Just a couple of things. At the ribbon cutting for Ann Street, I recall speaking with the, the former head of HCD and pointing out that this is not an accessible bathroom. We don't have an accessible bathroom. I remember pointing that out then and wondering if that was going to be a problem then, and was told, oh, no, 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 it's not a problem. My question is, is we've, we're talking about how people are not able to stick with the program or whatever, but how many people have had to be turned away because we don't have that accessibility? You know, that, an inordinate amount of unhoused folks are disabled. And how, how many have we had to turn away or not be able to help because we don't have that accessibility? So I just, as we're having this conversation, I want us to keep that, be mindful of that as well. It's not so much as a question, but it's something to keep in mind. And, and for us to be having these kind of conversations openly, rather than decisions being made about what kind of equipment we're buying without speaking to, say, some of the groups that might be involved, like, we have the Disability Advisory Committee sitting right there. They would have probably flagged this well before that equipment was purchased. So I think that that's something that, you know, we need to be leaning on, on these different groups that we, we know we're going to be servicing in the future.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say to Sharon's point, you know, I think we've never really exceeded more than 13 or 14 people out of the 24 units, and we were kind of limited to 10 because of that second staff person. So, you know, as we go to the RFP and we move to a partnership, which I think is the direction we should go, we'll actually free ourselves up to be able to fully occupy the place. Now, you know, the handicap accessibility notwithstanding, that's a challenge. I mean, I didn't, that was all, it predates me. But to your point, I think if you're, if you're looking to provide needs, then that's the direction we're headed in. It pulls us away from it and allows them to fill it up, so.
Thank you.
Is it that we are partnering with somebody, or we want to partner, or we're just?
Well, it's been my, I'm using the term partnering in the sense that we're not going to probably sell the asset. We would, we would allow them to lease it for some nominal amount, provide the services as under certain agreements. So when I say partners, I don't know what that means in government terms, but what I mean is in the context of we would own the real estate and they would run the operation day-to-day within parameters.
Yeah, and RFP is request for proposal. We are requesting people to send us proposals on what they want that relationship to look like. So it will be based off of what we receive from the community and how they would like to enter into a relationship with the city. It could be, hey, we'd like to purchase it, we'd like to lease the materials, we'd like to do physical improvements, we'd like you to do that, we'd like to just do the day-to-day operations. So when we get all of the proposals, we will evaluate that criteria and then select something which will then come to you all for final adoption of an approval. So partnership, it's a little bit fluid because we're not exactly sure what exactly people are going to be proposing to us to define that relationship.
Okay. Well, we have a couple of public comments, so we'll move on to that portion, and if we have some further discussion, we'll get into that. So Molly Hiligas?
I'm Molly Hiligas. I'm a city resident residing at 141 North Park Drive. I'm also the president and CEO of Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County. Habitat for Humanity was founded with the belief in radical inclusivity and partnerships in housing. We have been a positive change agent in the Church Street neighborhood, receiving CDBG funding over the last two decades to help low-income families become homeowners. Today, however, I stand before you in opposition of the mayor's request for amendment of the CDBG funding. This relates to his request to move 50,000 from Ann Street construction project and the 19,000 for the caseworker. The first reason in opposition is that while the mayor has been soliciting for a nonprofit to take over Ann Street, as you've heard, any agency that might be interested would need to ensure ADA accessibility to the bathroom and shower. This is what that 50,000 was earmarked for, earmarked to accomplish, and I have a copy of that right here in the application that was submitted and approved. This appears all very intentional. Secondly, removing funding for a caseworker is downright irresponsible. Any program serving the homeless for transitional housing needs many caseworkers to manage it. Comparing the FY '24 budget and organizational chart shows that Ann Street needs a manager and three caseworkers. The mayor's proposed FY '25 budget, the caseworkers are being cut from three to one. Imagine being that one caseworker. This is a recipe for burnout and disaster. It's poor management and it's irresponsible. It appears that the Ann Street Village is on the chopping block. Defunding Ann Street by cutting staff is absolutely not the answer. I think what disturbs me the most is the lack of servant leadership. While we are in the middle of a housing crisis, this shows a lack of caring for our most vulnerable in our city. Over my 10 years at Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County, we have hired several people who once we hired, we realized were homeless. Some were sleeping on couches at friends' homes. Another was a veteran who was sleeping at the Christian Shelter and took showers at Planet Fitness. In all these cases, it took months and months for their housing situations to stabilize. So let me ask you, are you 100% committed to all the community residents, all of them? Ann Street Village is an important step to stability for homeless people ready to make changes in their lives. Ann Street Village deserves staff and resources to continue the success and momentum of the Housing First program. Council, I implore you to restore the CDBG funding and save Ann Street Village. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Sheila McQuinn, live at 229 Canal Park Drive in Salisbury. I'm currently retired clinical neuropsychologist, PhD. I recently became acquainted with the Ann Street Project and actually had the opportunity to go by and see some of the people there and read up on what was going on. I was frankly taken aback when I saw that there were so few people present in the facility when it was designed for more. And I looked up some of the research on, on what was originally designed, and wow, it didn't seem like some of the current implementation of the programs fit the original concepts. And, you know, just the old Maslow hierarchy of needs, food, shelter, and clothing. People need those things before they can start to do things like enter rehab programs and start to optimize on other life options. So it seems to me there may be some strong gatekeeping going on here. But more than that, what occurred to me is what are we doing as a population for the least of these? So, you know, old research background, I kind of looked, well, who was talking about that? And of course, it's in Matthew 25. And it's interesting where that verse talks out, starts out talking about the separation of the governments into sheep and goats. And are we a sheep or a goat? And how do you tell the difference? Well, it's pretty simple. You know, when I was hungry, you fed me. When I was thirsty, you gave me something to drink. And when I had nowhere to live, you took me in. So the goats go to the left, who did not do these things, and the sheep go to the right. So who are we, goats or sheep? Thank you.
I'm a city resident and I live at 531 Whale Street. For the past five years, I lived in the city of Salisbury. I am proud of how our community supports the disadvantaged and the marginalized. I have seen it, and I've been a part of, parted in helping others less fortunate than most. After seeing the Ann Street Village become a very important part of helping those in need to being dismantled by our mayor, who is appointed by the people for the people, I want to be a voice for them all. 10 years ago, I became homeless after a major health issue. I lived in my car for two weeks and had nowhere to go. I've been a working woman my entire life, raised a family and everything. People don't just become homeless because they're lazy, they're drug addicts, or they don't work. Circumstances more than often is the reason, just like mine. Fortunately, I, it took me about almost 10 years to get back on my feet, and I am now housing secure for the first time. And I'm here to speak with people that might not be able to come here and speak, to let them know we do care about them and we do want to help them. So what I'm asking is the city is to be the kindest people deserve. Keep the Ann Street Village from closing its doors to the disadvantaged and marginalized people of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Martin Hutchison, and I am not a city of Salisbury resident, but I have lived, I have worked in the city of Salisbury for the last 25 years as pastor at Community of Joy Church on South Boulevard. And 10 years ago, I founded the Camden Community Garden, and I have worked with the homeless population for the last 17 years, so I know that population very well. And I agree with the speakers ahead of me and am very, very, very concerned about what we are doing. We are doing what we always do to this population. We are putting them aside, pushing them down, marginalizing them, and saying they don't matter, that they're not a part of our community. And yet, what Ann Street Village could do if it were run properly, and I cannot figure out for the life of me why it hasn't been run properly, there's a bunch of smart people in this city that can figure it out. It's time to get them in place to figure out how to do it. And letting the funding go away to, to make it ADA accessible is not going to be a ticket to success for Ann Street Village. I don't know about the RFP process. I asked Muir about it Thursday night at the Newton Street Community Center ribbon cutting for the STEM lab. It sounds like it's not even been put in place, yet I saw it on Facebook, I think it was in February or so, you know, when Hearts and Hands had a request, and there was this thing, need to throw it out there wider. And I don't know why it's taking all that long. I know it's government, but let's figure it out, folks. And let's not just ditch Ann Street like we ditch the homeless community all the time. Let's show them that they matter, that we are the kindest city in the USA. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, there are a lot of things I don't need to echo. I would like to commend the people who spoke. DeShawn, thank you for your line of questioning because that inquiry is needed. I have to echo the sentiment before me, you know, of what we do to the least of these. I guess I will also share that personally, you know, I've experienced homelessness, I think the most recent interval was two years and nine months ago. I now am the property manager, for those who don't know, of an apartment complex. So I just feel like when people are thinking about, like, how can we solve this problem? They're not thinking this person can, in a fairly, with, and I did, it is only by grace of other people that I am here and that I am stable. And so collectively, Ann Street represents that, our collective, our ability collectively to express grace to the least of these in our community. I do not want to see that forsaken. And exactly what Mr. Hutchinson said was that we have very intelligent, capable people here who, when it is in their self-interest, can seemingly do whatever they want. So I would just like to see that kind of effort collectively put towards seeing this project be a success. And it is not because people believe in it or want it in an ideal, we can look to other countries and other states where this is a successful program. We don't have to reinvent the wheel ourselves. We can look to existing programs and paradigms that are already functional. So it is fine to be like, okay, well, what do you want us to do? We don't have any ideas. There are people who have made this a successful program elsewhere. Look to them, and that is also your job, not the public's. Thank you.
Robert Taylor?
I signed up for the next CDBG item. So I'll say this, see you later, alligator.
I believe we have a couple of comments on-
Monica, if you're available.
Monica.
Monica Brooks, online. Monica, if you're talking, it's muted right now. The only, I don't-
Oh, phew, I think I'm-
We got you now. We can hear you.
Sorry, apologies. Good evening. My name is Monica Brooks. I am a resident of Salisbury. But I wanted to just offer a few comments relating to this matter. The first, the first piece is that this seems very rushed and I'm also hearing, we're also hearing mixed messages right now. First it was, it's going to be a partnership and then now we're moving it over altogether. So it sounds like there's some confusion, so it'd be nice for, there's to be some very, you know, clear bounds, some clear information there. And also more transparency. It seemed like all of this information was kind of released very last minute. I think the importance of this matter warrants some real time taken to look at all types of options, because specifically, and even if we, even beyond Ann Street Village, we still have a huge unhoused population. So what we want to know is what is the city's plan in relation to the unhoused? What exactly are, what kind of studies are being done, or what kind of committees are being put together? What's happening to ensure that we do prioritize this space, because it is absolutely urgent that we do so? And we know a number, thousands of the unhoused are children, and we have 63% of kids living below poverty just within this county. So, and a large number of them are in the city of Salisbury. So, please, look at this. And then we don't say, of course Truitt Street needs funding. Of course, you know, different parks and things need funding, but it shouldn't be an either/or. I think it takes time and research to figure out the best way to do the most good and not make it one or the other. And so I agree with Martin said, or I don't know if it was Martin or someone that said earlier, that it seems like every time things come around, this is one of the categories where people are put on the back burner. And we still have a huge problem with lack of affordable housing, horrific landlords. So this entire space of housing really needs some serious deep diving. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we'll call up Lynn Bratton, and while she's up, I just want to underscore, I know that, again, the comment was just being about it being rushed, but there's a June 7th deadline to this, correct? Or is there, is there a deadline when this funding has to be, when we have to sign off on this?
Not, the June 7th is when the public comment period ends. And I guess I feel like I need to say, it seems like it's been kind of a couple of things conflated here. This whole idea of needing to reallocate started, I think, last November, before there was any talk about, I'm kind of outside of all that, but I just feel like I need to say, before there was any talk about possibly the city transferring it. And that was actually, came to my attention, that there's no way to make Ann Street Village handicap accessible, which the past, the previous Housing and Community Development Director had put forth those projects, but there actually is no way to do it unless you do, like Muir said, potentially replace the whole trailer. So, he had put forth a project that wasn't workable. But, so now you're in a situation where the city didn't meet its timeliness goals. There are restrictions on CDBG funding and there are timeliness goals. So, me, I'm a grants person, I'm a money person, I'm like, you know, how, how can we get this money spent? So there wasn't any grand design or scheme going on. I just have to say that.
Of course, yeah.
Because it seems like that's kind of been implied. And I will take the blame for that, because I, you know, I was unaware that this was going on. So to me, it just made sense. Put it in projects that are already going, so that we can finish those, which we've already obligated to. I know, you know, for me, financially, that's what made a standpoint. I wasn't considering, you know, all these other factors.
Of course.
So.
Can I add to that?
I just wanted to answer that quick question. I want to make sure we have a lot more public comments. Ms. Bratton?
Hi, thank you for those comments, ma'am. I understand that you feel you are in the middle. So I think you're just trying to figure out a stance. My name is Lynn Bratton, I'm kind of a normal person here now, and I live in the city of Salisbury, have for the last 30-plus years. Prior to Ann Street Village being built, I owned Baker Street Rentals, the Baker Street properties that fronted on what used to be Linens of the Week property. I owned them since the mid-'80s. I bought them as a young lady, okay, I'll just say that, and held on to them, and I had some amazing clients that came through those, those buildings, many of whom are still my personal friends and who keep up with me even through my cancer journey, which has made me feel very special. Those properties abutted to Linens of the Week property, which was deemed uninhabitably usable because of the chemicals that were used during that process when the laundromat was there. The city somehow or another managed to take ownership of it, I don't know much of those details. I do know that prior to the building of Ann Street Village, they felt they could put the homeless village on that property without very much thought, process going into it, and spent considerable resources trying to figure that out, only to find out that was money under the bridge and money that shouldn't have been spent. So I go back again to a phrase I've used often here, think with the end in mind. Maybe that'll be on my tombstone, I don't know. But think with the end in mind did not seem to be happening for Ann Street Village, and now sadly, the new mayor and the new housing people and, and Deshaun and everybody on the council are now trying to figure out, how do we think with the end in mind when the end wasn't thought about when we went into this? There's got to be a way to convicture that trailer. There's got to be some kind of a mobile system that can be added. You can't tell me that every, every festival that happens in, in communities always has a handicap bathroom available. I understand it's the shower, we've got carpenters, we've got people on the city staff that know how to build and plumb and do all the electrical wiring. I feel like there ought to be something that wouldn't involve an $80,000 reboot of a trailer, and I'm just pulling that number out of the air, because I know those things are expensive and to sell them used takes time and you may not get your resources back the way you want to in a timely manner. So, I'm looking at, just sharing that background with you. They went into it with, with a grandiose idea of this is going to solve our problems, let's get this done, let's make some pictures, let's do some headlines, and now look at what we have. We have less than half occupancy, the engagement factor in the community never happened. My clients living on Baker Street would have loved to have been invited, to have walked over there, toured. They were never knocked on a door and invited. I asked them more than once, have you ever seen it? No. They have the gates closed, they seem to go in, da-da-da-da. It's all going on behind closed doors. Those were the communities, those were the people that were going to be the neighbors and wanted to know what was going on and engage with their new neighbors and offer them a hand of freedom, of friendship, and camaraderie and community. And instead, it was a cloistered environment. So, I, I know we need to fix it, I don't think we need to get rid of it. I know we're on a timeline, so I don't know what the answer is. I'm just sharing with you one more time, as we go through new projects in the city. Will somebody please take the breaks a minute and think with the end in mind before you go into these projects and end up with a mess? Thank you very much.
Kristi Richardson.
Hi, I'm Kristi Richardson. I live at 303 South Park Drive in the city, and I work with the unhoused population over at the Wycomical Public Library. I just wanted to add some humanity to the discussion as far as the people that I work with every day and how it's more, it's more than the money talk and, and all of this. They're real humans that are coming into me every single day, that are sleeping under this bridge, that are seeking answers. They have been, they've gone through the application process with people who no longer work for the city and they want to know answers, and when I call the phone number, nobody's answering. I can't get answers for them, and it's completely unfair on their behalf. Many of them have mental illness, they don't understand why they've gone through this application process and it's fallen through the cracks, and here they are again, under this bridge when the cold weather shelter closes. Many of them have stipulations that keep them from our area shelters. They can't stay at the Christian Shelter, they can't stay at Halo. Where are they supposed to stay? This was going to be the answer for a lot of these people who have been under this bridge for longer than they should be. And I just think, as we're talking about cutting casework and, and all of this from the program, they need that, they need someone that's going to help them, because a lot of them, they can't hold down your regular job, like you, you know, you think, oh, we'll get them a job, we'll get them housed. They need more, they need, they need support, and I'm fielding that support every day on my own. And it feels like the city has wiped their hands several times of this project, and it's disheartening whenever you have your hands in with these people who are coming to you hungry, who are coming to you cold, who are coming to you and need these services, and there's this big beautiful place that, that they thought they could stay, and they've, they don't even know why they're not allowed to be there. So I just think that their well-being needs to be considered whenever these conversations are being had. Thank you.
Amber Green.
Amber Green, Executive Director of Phoenix Youth Project. I feel like once again, I'm always trying to settle a young person's nerves due to adults' incompetence. I find it really disheartening that I just worked for about six months trying to console, empower, and keep an 18-year-old from giving up. And just maybe less than a month ago, they got the, they got the notification that they were going to be a resident at Ann Street. And now, because of newspapers and Facebook posts and because of gossip and because of hearsay, I am now getting texts, Ms. Am, am I going to get kicked out? Ms. Am, what's going to happen? Ms. Am, I just got here. I'm tired of trying to console young people when I feel like they're not getting listened to in the first place. Passion built Ann Street and passion is going to keep Ann Street here, with the city or without the city. I just want to make that clear. Passion built Truitt Community Center, I was part of that. I saw Christine Chestnut work her butt off to get Ann Street in this community, because she knew these individuals firsthand. We will continue, and when I say we, I mean the community and the people, we will continue to work with this population. However, we can't do it alone. And when we try to blur over the facts with money and, and technicalities and what should happen, what we can't happen, with all this other stuff, we're forgetting the people that matter. And right now, I don't have an answer for this 18-year-old who is texting me frantically, what are we going to do? What if they kick us out? I don't know anything. So whatever decision is made, make sure you talk to the residents first and make sure they're included in the conversation. If accessible trailer is the problem, I promise you, I can find someone who will go on Craigslist, who will go on any other place to find that trailer. It's not hard. It shouldn't be hard, and it should have been done when, when the passion was first there. I saw Michelle ask that question. They glazed over it. I saw individuals get turned away. It, it's not a surprise. We may have applied for that funding 18 months ago, but we knew that we had homeless individuals in wheelchairs underneath the bridge years ago. We knew that we had individuals dying over opioid overdose years ago. We knew that we had people dying outside in the cold years ago. To say that we can't do this because of a trailer, y'all got me messed up. And y'all need to fix it. Because at the end of the day, I have to answer to the youth that look to me as a leader, that looks to me as someone to console them. And for me to say, well, it's because they don't have an accessible trailer. I don't, that's not an answer that's going to work for me, and it's not going to answer that works for them. So whatever decision that is made, include those voices that is behind those gates. And more importantly, open the gates, so the community can help those that are inside. Thank you.
Do you have anything else to add? I know we had a couple questions and the mayor had a, had a comment. Did you still want to answer the question?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, you know, obviously, we're committed to the homeless and to the Ann Street. To me, from my perspective, I'm trying to move to a place where we can actually open the place up to the full 24 units, you know, the, the capacity. We're not doing anybody any favors by keeping it at 10. So, if we do need a grant to do the handicap accessibility component, it won't be part of this grant, which we're trying to transfer to Truitt Street. It can't be, it's not enough money. So that's where I guess we're struggling, I mean, at the end of the day. So, you know, I think to Molly's point, I mean, personally, I mean, I've been involved in seven houses over Truitt Street, two, one I did twice. And so, I'm, you know, very much a fan of Church Street, Ann Street. So, yeah, we're trying to do our best, we've inherited this project since the prior administration, and we're, we've got some new challenges, we're trying to navigate them. But nobody, nobody sits up at this table, and the administration included, is not committed to helping the homeless, for sure. I mean, that's just, you know, beyond the pale, so thank you.
So let me ask, I think you all were trying to figure that out. Again, I go back and I'm going to ask the question again. The reason why these funds, well, the reason that we're saying the funds cannot be used here for Ann Street is because of the accessibility. You told me that there's no timeline to submit this or to sign off on this, you know, to whatever entity this, this was. What would deem this, what stipulation, can you find me, where's it? I would like documentation just to say that. I can't, in good faith, I think, and I think, you know, the public and council may agree, in good faith, we can't say no to this just by the sheer word. That is, I appreciate you, but I need to see some documentation that, that says that explicitly. That will, if, if that is the case, and it takes however many months of time to get that to happen, I don't want to see these funds to, to not be utilized in Salisbury. But, if it can be a simple fix, I would like us to make that, that, that extension.
Well, my concern is, I, it's my understanding, and I am not a engineer, but I don't think there's even room for a handicap ramp to access.
If I may.
Yes.
Every year, traditionally, we get community development block grant funding, CDBG funding.
Yes.
We currently have a viable project with Truitt Street that needs additional funding to be completed. We have an Ann Street Village project that has a need, but does not have a simple solution. We are a little bit time-sensitive on trying to solve that problem. I don't even, I don't think we have the space right now, and I don't think $50,000 is going to cover it. Again, solving the problem we have right now and spending whatever it takes in next round's CDBG funding to solve Ann Street is a, is a possibility, is a viable solution. But we need to make sure that if we don't fund this, if we don't move this forward, we could have two problems on our hands. We could have two projects that are not moving forward, because we have, neither one is fully funded, so we would be needing additional funding in some capacity. So, I'm not saying we are trying to defund one to start another one, we are trying to solve one problem and figure out how to solve the second problem in due time, which is, it sounds like we need to be moving a little bit faster with that, and figuring out exactly what we can do to solve that problem, and deciding if we're going to solve that problem in advance of whoever we join with as a partner, and say, here's what our solution is, or waiting for to identify our, our partner, and then we collectively solve that problem. But it may be having to remove units, it may be having to reconfigure things, it could be a couple hundred thousand dollars when it's all said and done to do it the right way. Maybe we should have thought about it the first time, but I just want to make sure we get it right and not be sitting in front of you asking for additional funding, etc. So, if I may, may add on that.
With Truitt, we were having the conversation, I remember when I first got appointed in October, that was one of the first questions I was asking, is why is Truitt Street not completed? Why is it a shell of a Why is it a shell of a building? It was so many whys. And I was, and again, I think that's why I'm a little bit upset, is because I do want to see this building complete, but it's like the if/then, and I have to choose between, you know, two great projects, when Truitt Street should have been completed last summer, correct? Or fall.
It was supposed to have been done by September 1st. That was the initial deadline.
Yeah, so that's, this is why I'm like, we shouldn't even be having this conversation.
Welcome to my world.
Our world.
Yeah, some of those, yeah, that was, you know, again, learning the other side of the table with how projects run. And, you know, but with Ann Street specifically, about the trailer, the issue, there's a couple issues to go into a little detail about, the accessibility issue. It comes down to a space issue. So, the, whatever accessibility ramp, and a lot of these I have learned from doing Chesapeake Housing Mission ramp builds, that the, there's a certain amount of space needed for ramps for them to be qualified for ADA accessibility. They require some space. And so, I, you know, we would have to look at, even if we replaced it, then we would be looking at, would we have to move units to allow for that space for a ramp to be in there for the accessibility piece? So, and a lot of those units, even though they are collapsible and transportable, there are, we have our fire suppression system that is connected to each unit, so that's probably where a big piece of the cost would be, would, I don't know how that would impact the fire suppression system. So, there are some things in that, that we would have to partner with DID to take a look at, to see what would be involved.
I, what, can you all put some thought into Ann Street?
Absolutely.
A plan, a thought, present that to, of course, the public, but council as well. And that is something that we definitely, a concrete thought, because again, I asked this two week, council sessions ago, about what our partnership plan was, we need to have, and again, I think someone mentioned in public comment, is we have to have the end in mind with this. And right now, we're just piecing together, and I don't feel whole making a decision without knowing what is our plan for Ann Street Village. Councilwoman Gregory?
What is the issue? We keep talking about building a ramp, like that's the foregone conclusion. What is the issue with placing the bathrooms ground level? I mean, I just, I don't, I don't understand why they were built so high up in the first place.
Well, that is a trailer. So, that was actually, they, the previous director purchased that from a place in Texas, and he drove it from Texas to here. So, it is actually a trailer, so it's a...
Yeah, trailers can be built on foundations that aren't as high up as this unit is. I mean, that's, this is what I don't understand, is why it's so high up. Because the reason it's so high up, for those of you who have never had to build a ramp, it's a foot of ramp for every inch you are up off the ground, and when it's three feet off the ground, you do the math. That's a 24-foot ramp. I've had to build a 24-foot ramp outside of my house. It's not short, I'll tell you that. So, you know, and that was the lowest point at my house that we could put a ramp. So, my question is, is what's the problem with just lowering the unit itself? Why are we having to worry about building a ramp? Why aren't we just taking, I just, I don't, I'm just asking if there's a technical or logistical issue with putting...
I don't, I don't really know the structure of underneath the trailer itself, what's under there. It could be, it could still be wheels under there. I don't...
Well, that's what I'm saying, is why have, why all the talk about building a ramp when this, you know, my mom always said, use the KISS method, keep it simple.
Honestly, the simplest solution would be to kind of start over. If we can find someone to buy the trailer, we can build a building there that has bathrooms on the ground, has...
That's great.
Showers on the ground, and includes our...
Yeah.
And your washing machine, vacuum, one space. It could, it could work, it could be, it could all fit, triple the cost. We could be in $150,000, $200,000 pretty quickly. That money doesn't exist in this, that can be the next funding round. So, again, I'm just, I don't want to just predict things, but we can solve this problem pretty quickly, but it can't be solved with the money that's currently on the table.
Sure.
But we can talk more about this, as long as you need to.
A lot of talk about solving it with equipment we have on hand, too. So, without that, so...
To tag on to what Michelle is saying, if we can figure out how to fix it, that would be great. Another, maybe this is just my being naive, is the fact that the fence, can that fence be knocked out if you have to have a ramp? Move it out, make it a larger space? If we own that property?
We're pretty close to the next property line in the back where that fence is, so there's not much setback.
So, it comes back to, and if it's a plumbing issue, I'm sure we have city...
The existing bathhouse itself, the doors are not wide enough to be qualified as accessible, so it's also the structure...
So, just get rid of the whole thing.
So, is...
Can I make one more suggestion?
Yes.
Real quick. So, to keep the conversation moving forward, to also appease and make sure people understand that we're serious about this, there's a compromise out of this in real time.
You may be, go ahead, you're very good, go ahead.
Great. Right now, in the whole document, there's actually two pieces, we've not talked about Waterside. We would like to keep that in there and move that project forward, as is with that funding. You can strike the other additional lines out of that, to keep the funding for Ann Street Village intact. I don't know about, we have not talked much about the case manager, we need to solve that problem, it's a one-year and done, so you have to figure out how to solve it later in the future. The $50,000 would be a place order, but we would probably need to find additional funding, whether it's CDBG funding later on, or city funding now. But, in real time, we would have to solve the shortfall in Truitt Street, so we'd need to discuss that, too. But we can keep the funding in Ann Street...
Sure.
...to show that obligation is there, figure out what it's going to cost, figure out how to pay for the rest of that, and come up with the money for Truitt Street. And then, but it is timely.
Sure.
But I do want to make sure Waterside is not forgotten in this by just tabling all of it. So, just want to...
True.
My proposal, which, you know, be, some work for you all, since this isn't time-sensitive, is we just move this to the next, either we can, special meeting this next week, or the next work session. You will have a concrete plan, get some dollars and cents, go out there yourself, figure out raising, lowering ramp, whatever. You have detailed explanation as to what we're doing, what we need to do, how we can do it, everything, take as long as you want. You do that. If you, if you want to have it for next Monday, that's fine, or, you know, two weeks.
17th.
Yes. We'll put it on for the 17th, then. You will have that presentation for us, that'll make us feel better about what we're doing with these funds there, if you all don't mind. That, again, there's no time sensitivity with this. I think it'll be good, and that would put us versus rushing to move, might, no, I don't want to do that. I want us to have a plan with where these monies are going. I don't want to lose funds, but we need to figure out what's going on with Ann Street, and with Truitt Street, and with Waterside. Good?
Sounds good.
Sure. Thank you.
Yes.
So, does that forego the next portion, or it's not?
Not.
Ms. Bynum, you want to go over the, I'll give you a second to get yourself together, but to go over the other portion there?